I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, February 28th meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with approval of the minutes from February 14th. Are there any additions, corrections, additions? Does anybody find them okay?
I'm making motion when we approve them.
Okay, Dennis, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstentions? Okay. The next item is correspondence. Any correspondents from staff?
I think Ann was gonna walk you through our email signing up for the notifications for agendas and everything, because it's been a little confusing since we switched over to the new website and then signing up for all the different agendas and when you want to receive communication from different entities within the city.
Yeah, the odd thing is, I've gone through the process twice and I've gotten confirmation from the listserv after I've gone in and done the confirmation, and I still have not received any correspondence. And the other thing is, it's really hard to find the shared readings, so that "I'm looking for it," you just type in what you're looking for and it gets you there, and I have no idea how it got, what the root was, but the old, yeah, just as an example, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, and the problem you were having Wendy is kinda what I, why I wanted to go over, how this notification registration works, because one of the IT guys did some testing, and what he found is, well, let me, let me walk you through this first. So, if you wanna go sign up for anything, you go to this "How do I?" and then "Register for," and then click on "notifications." And that takes you to a list of all these different things going on in the city. So you can sign up for anything you want. But every single time you click on something over here, so let's say I wanna sign up for the Police Daily Activity Log, whoops. Where do I wanna click? Oh, I need to sign in first. Okay, first thing you need to do is go up here and do a little account. Is that not correct?
There's an easier way if you're not as unemployed.
Oh.
You don't, do you have to have a password?
Because I don't do that.
Because I don't remember doing a password.
Okay, we're all learning here.
And then, right here, you see a box that says "email address," and just put in your email address and sign in and not have to worry about a password or anything.
Oops, I can't see. See? This podium is not made for short people.
Tall ones either.
I know what you mean, Ann.
Only the ones right in the middle of the line. Okay, did I spell that all correctly? Okay. So I get signed in. So then, let's say I wanna sign up for the day, oh, already did that one. So let's say I wanna sign up for Poverty on the Plu, so I would click that, and it's telling me that I'm gonna get an email. So this is the key piece, that you need to go out to your email then and look. And I already did one earlier today, so I'd have this ready to show you. You get two messages. One of them says, "You've been subscribed." The other one says, "You need to confirm it." So you have to go in here, and I think that's the piece you were missing Wendy.
Nope. I've done that twice.
Well, but you, how many were you signing up for?
I was, well, I, altogether, eventually I added Transportation, but the first two were just Historic Preservation and.
Because Chris, NIT, did some testing, and he said with Gmail accounts, since you get two confirmation messages with each thing that you sign up for, that Gmail would, if you get more than, I think he said it was four emails that look like the same thing, which all those confirmation emails look the same, so Gmail looks at that and says, "Oh, you're getting a whole bunch of the same thing," and they, like, eliminate some of them or something. So you probably weren't getting the actual confirmation for every single commission that you signed up for, is his guess.
Okay.
So.
If you'd like to come into the IT department at the Eden Youth Center during business hours, we can help make sure that all of this goes the way that it should.
Okay.
But I signed all of you up directly before the agenda went out last Friday, so you should have a couple emails that look like this somewhere, and they might be in your spam folder. But after, when I came back Monday, I looked and only Victoria, Joel, and somebody else, there were three people that actually got their, I think it was Dennis, got his completed. And the rest of you still weren't on the list, which would indicate that you hadn't finished the confirmation step, so.
The weird thing is, I did it, though, because I got.
You are on it now.
Yeah.
I've double-checked you, and you're on it now.
Okay. So I had to do it twice, yeah.
Since you're there.
Yes.
Where's spam? I don't know where spam is.
It all depends on your, what you're using.
Might be trash, it might be, yeah.
Junk, is it?
Yeah, on our Outlook thing, it's the, where is it? Junk email.
Because there's a junk folder in UI.
So you, that you're saying it just automatically maybe went into the trash bin?
It might have, if it didn't, if your server didn't like the, the look of this listserv.
Well, I need to figure out how to do that to restore my stuff. There's a lot of junk.
And just so you, if you haven't really looked into this yet, there's a lot of stuff you can sign up for. And with regard to the meetings, you can sign up for the agendas as well as the calendar items. So each commission has an agenda registration or a calendar registration, and what that does is gives you an email anytime something is added to the Agenda Center, which could be the Agenda or the Follow-Up Minutes, or if it's, if something is just put on the calendar as like a placeholder and it doesn't have an agenda yet, you'll also get an email from that.
So if I could interject here for a second, I met with Bill and Mike last week about the whole communication with Transportation Commission, and if you would like to stay in touch with what Transportation Commission is doing, a good idea might be to go ahead and sign up on this, to get notifications for that as well, so that may be what threw me over the top with it.
Yeah, down here. It might have been, that you, that was what gave you too many emails.
Yeah.
And then Wendy, you mentioned about the shared readings. Let me just show you real quick again.
Okay.
So you go to Planning and Zoning.
So.
And it's over here.
It's got a.
And the problem is, it blends in with that picture.
I didn't see it.
So I'm working on the webpage, and I'm gonna have some more items over here, which will make that green box bigger, and it should stand out better for you then.
Okay.
I just haven't got there yet.
Has yet, yeah.
If anybody forgets any of this, we are recording, so you can go watch the video and, nice helpful reminder.
Thanks.
Because ultimately, the plan is, we're, like, I've been posting the agenda on the website, and then I send you all an email saying, "Okay, it's out there now." We're not gonna do that anymore, because once I post it on the website here now, it automatically should send you that message.
But we're still gonna get hard copies?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Does it, do all the emails come from the Civic Plus?
And when the Agenda email comes out, I think I have mine saved here. It looks like.
Yeah. What's that?
So is this what you can do if you, if you haven't got any email? Because I don't think I have gotten anything that I can find.
Yeah, you can go in and sign up.
Try to enter.
Yeah.
But you already signed me up, though, or whatever.
Well, but if you didn't do the confirmation step, you're not signed up yet.
I haven't done it, because I didn't get the email.
Oh, you didn't get the confirmation email, you mean?
I haven't gotten anything.
Okay. We can play with it after the meeting if you want.
Okay. What I found, and I might be crazy.
So this is what.
It'll say "new agenda."
This is what the message looks like from the website when the thing gets posted. And it gives you this link down here in the Agenda Center. And then you go down and can pull it up over here.
Go ahead and do it. So you get the whole PDF, and sometimes those things are gigantic.
Well, on these, I've been splitting them up, so the PDF should be just the Agenda or the cover page.
Okay. And are those live?
Uh, yes.
Probably Works Finance and Admin, they showed up, but they weren't, they didn't do anything when I clicked on them, "Are live."
Was that recent, or?
Yep.
Oh.
For this week.
Well, I'm not, I can't answer for Lori, but this is how we split them out, so you can look at just the Agenda without pulling up the whole thing, because, yeah, the packet can be big, and then it takes a long time to download. And then, once the meeting has happened and the minutes are approved, then they show up right here, and then this is the video link.
And how did you get there? Oh, you just went back to, yeah, Planning and Zoning.
In the Agenda Center, yep. So I'm only about two steps ahead of the rest of you on learning all this, so with Zach's help and the other IT fellows, we can muddle through this.
So in generally, you post the Agenda on Fridays, is that right?
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, so we should be looking at them then, yeah.
So since this is up there, being taped, if you're the general public and you're not getting these emails.
Then just click on them.
How would you, how would you go and, could you show us how you would go and find it? So I'm the public, and I read in the paper, Planning and Zoning is doing something interesting.
Oh, how do I navigate to this spot right here without an email?
Nine times out of ten, I don't care.
Well, there's a couple ways. So on the main website, this little button down here, "Agendas and Minutes," that's the easiest way to get to it.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
And then you can scroll down and pick whatever commission you want.
Okay.
And then, once you click on the commission, that's what, that's where the email link got you to, was right there.
Yeah, I think I followed that link and did everything, but I didn't find the shared readings when I went that way, so I went back to "I'm looking for" and said, "shared readings," and then it.
Oh. Because they're out on the commission page itself.
Right, gotcha. Yeah, so it's a different route.
Okay. All right. I'll just step out of Mike's way here. I don't know which one, you went up there first, that one?
Um, oh, it's, yeah, it's the green one.
Green one, okay.
Okay. So do we have any other correspondence? No.
No.
Okay. Great, thank you, Ann. Yeah. All right, so item three is the Transportation Commission Meeting Report, and since there isn't one, I don't think, because Joel isn't here, I'll just interject and say, repeat again, that if you wanna find out what's going on with Transportation Commission, it's, we've decided that's one good way, is to just sign up for their notifications and, um, let's see, I'm trying to, and we're gonna try to institutionalize more of a back and forth with reports that, I was listening in on the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, and Joel gave a, gave a really thorough report, and, you know, and, and sometimes that happens in the reverse to Transportation Commission, when we have something that's relevant to them, apparently, that's, that goes on, because Bill, Bellknap, is a representative for, from the staff to Transportation. So trying to, to get better coordinated between them, that's maybe one step in the right direction, so, between the two commissions. Okay. So, um, I guess there's no other news on that one right now. I think their next meeting isn't, isn't even tomorrow, is it? It's like next month or something.
It is, yes, until March.
Yeah, so, okay. Now, we've reached item four, Public Comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come speak to the commission about items that aren't pending or currently on our agenda, and if, you're welcome to come down, there's nobody in the audience today, so we'll just move on to item five, which Mike will talk about zoning code revisions to the Ag Forest Zone.
So the Ag Forest Zone, we have in the code right now, this was kind of the last thing that we were waiting on with the Use Table. We needed to somehow address the Ag Forest Zone, and what we were planning on doing is just using this, the county's Ag Forest Zone, because it's primarily a county zone, so area-city impact is largely encompassed by the Ag Forest Zone, and we do have about nine or so properties within the city that are really remnant pieces that were probably in the county at one point in time, and then just hadn't been rezoned because maybe their ag uses, or maybe their single-family uses, and it really wasn't a need if they're, they weren't subdividing the property in order to rezone it. And so, we have a number of those within the city, and so that was kind of the, the last thing to wrap up, was addressing the Ag Forest Zone within the city, and we hadn't included it within the Use Table up to this point, mainly because we were just gonna try to insert it via the county, you know, reference it to have their rules apply within those Ag Forest areas. So we ended up, so generally, the Ag Forest Zone would be included within the revised Area-City Impact Agreement, and so our last agreement was from 2006, so that's how we adopt kind of these mutual codes that govern, the area-city impact is through the agreement, and we have negotiations with the county. They have ended up indicating that they wish to renegotiate the area-city, I mean, it's 12 years old, and so it's time to update that. You know, it's kind of a snapshot in time, is what we're bound by right now in the Area-City Impact, and, and that was, you know, what existed in 2006, as far as our zoning code that they've adopted within the Area-City Impact. So everything that we've done as far as code amendments from that point on, haven't been reflected in, in that zoning code. And so, we've done a lot of things, urban agriculture ordinance, you know, being able to keep fowl and, and certain, you know, farm animals within city limits, those don't apply in the county in the Area-City Impact. You know, there are a number of things, accessory dwelling units, you know, it's kind of in limbo in the ACI right now, because, you know, these are all things that we've adopted since they were, you know, last renegotiated in 2006, and so the counties indicated that they would like us to adopt their Ag Forest Zone for the Area-City Impact, and so, you know, part of this is taking a look at, at that zone within their zoning code and compare it to what we currently have within our Ag Forest Zone, which is, you know, pretty similar to what they have. There are a few, you know, uses that exist in their zone that are different than ours, or maybe have more of an impact, and so we thought that there was, you know, quite a handful of uses that were really incompatible with some of the uses within the city. Like I'd mentioned before, we have about nine properties within the city that are still zoned Ag Forest, and those need to be rezoned in the future. And so after, you know, looking at their code and looking at the properties within the city, we thought that probably the best course of action was to insert the Ag Forest Zone in the Use Table ordinance, pretty much at an interim basis, so that allows us, you know, not to hold up the, the Use Table ordinance while we go through and kind of work with the property owners to rezone their properties for, you know, a zone that, you know, would, would be a little bit more compatible with the surrounding area instead of just the Ag Forest Zone. And then, to adopt the county's Ag Forest Zone with the Area-City Impact with some exceptions, and so probably look at, you know, when we renegotiate the Area-City Impact Agreement, look at, you know, adopting that, but striking certain things, like, they have adopted our zoning code and the Area-City Impact, but they haven't adopted our lighting ordinance, which is full cutoff, and so in the county, just because of the agricultural nature of the county, farmers, you know, or people that live in rural areas generally wanna protect, you know, outbuildings, and part of that is having large floodlights that light up, you know, certain areas for safety, and so that's one thing that they have chosen to strike from our current Area-City Impact ordinance. And so we're able to do that, too. And so, when we renegotiate, you know, if they want us to adopt their Ag Forest Zone, then we have the ability to eliminate some of those uses that may have an impact on the surround, you know, Area-City Impact surrounding the city, so. And then we'd like to, you know, take a couple years to work through, you know, just rezoning these properties within the city to a more appropriate designation. So looking at the Area-City Impact, you can see that majority of the property out there is zoned Ag Forest, and so that's the, kind of lighter green shaded color. You do have pockets of, and these are primarily just residential development, you have some R4, but it's primarily single-family, except for these areas located adjacent to the highway, which are either motor business or industrial. Lawson Carey, we have Germer Construction out there as well, some fountains development associated with their airstrip over here, and so, and this is all, I think, zoned industrial with fountains, Industrial Park there. And so it's primarily agricultural. Looking at the city, these are the parcels that are still Ag Forest, and so we've got a, a piece out here. So Thompson's property was previously rezoned from Ag Forest to Motor Business. There's still, I think, a 16-acre remnant over here, which I would anticipate they'd probably look at just, you know, rezoning that to Motor Business as well. We have some remnant Rogalski property out here on White Avenue. They had recently rezoned a portion of it for R4 multifamily, but there is a single-family house and just a large, it's, a lot of it's pretty wet ground. It's adjacent to Paradise Creek there that runs through the property in that northwest corner, and so there's another piece out here on White Avenue, and that's just a single-family house. You know, it's surrounded by more of a single-family neighborhood, and it's just a result of being on the edge of the city, and growth has just, you know, leapfrogged their property and just left it as a remnant Ag Forest because it, you know, is able to be a single-family, you're able to rebuild, and so there's really no reason to have it, you know, go through a rezone if you don't need to, and so it's just remained Ag Forest. This is a property in the northeast corner of Six and Mountain View, and it's just, you know, same thing, development, it was an older home and development has just happened around it, and they've subdivided that area, and it just got left Ag Forest. This is the Fosberg property on D and Mountain View, and this is in a conservation easement. You know, it, we're looking at, you know, some of the, a lot of these properties, we retain the farm ranch designation, but we don't have a whole lot of the property that's zoned farm ranch, and they're so similar, Ag Forest and farm ranch, that we'd probably just look at maybe converting that over to farm ranch, if it's in a conservation easement, it's not gonna be developed anyway, and so that would probably be appropriate for that property. There's a couple properties on Public, for some reason or the other, that are still zoned Ag Forest. You've got the large properties that PCEI owns on Rodeo Drive, they own kind of these three pieces, and then there's Conservation Easement further to the north, it's also Ag Forest, and you've got a number of farms, urban, urban agricultural farms that are off of Empire Lane as well. And, you know, one of the things that was in effect prior to the urban ag ordinance was that a lot of this agriculture, if you're not zoned Ag Forest within the city, then, you know, agriculture as a use, if it's a principal use on the property, then a lot of times it wasn't allowed until we did the urban agriculture ordinance, which pretty much allowed urban agriculture anywhere within the city as a permitted principal use. And so we, we've kind of resolved that conflict that we had between agriculture and the rest of the uses and properties within the city, so, you know, there's no reason why they wouldn't be able to go, you know, farm ranch, or if they wanted to, you know, go a different, more residential R1, R2, you know, if they had future plans for those properties, then there's no reason they couldn't do that and still maintain their current operations on the property. You've got one out here on Orchard, that's just, like I said, just one of those remnant pieces. The property's been subdivided around it and just ended up being left Ag Forest, but there's a single-family house on it. And then you've got an area over here that is old rail corridor, so it's this long linear piece that's been sold. I think Mr. Brant owns this piece here, and so it's, it's just this odd piece that never got rezoned, because it's, you know, just got included with his property and never got rezoned. So that's, that's Ag Forest, and then I believe these are the storage units, as you're heading out of town, on the right-hand side are also zoned Ag Forest, because they have, we allow self-storage units within the Ag Forest Zone. And so those are, you know, really the, the properties, they're not necessarily Ag Forest as far, you know, as far as the use of the property right now, and so I don't see any reason why there wouldn't be another appropriate zone that we could, you know, look at incrementally going through and working with those property owners to, you know, carry them through the process, and, and they're always really welcoming to go through the process, because they don't have to submit the fee for the rezone, and we pretty much do a lot of the work for them. And so, you know, as you recall, we haven't done one for a few years, but we had a lot of zones in the area that didn't make a whole lot of sense, and we've kind of gone through these areas and, and done these larger area rezones. I mean, one of them was A Street, where we had this mix mash of zoning designations that we went through, and I think it was all motor business was what it was, and we had all these issues with apartment complexes having to go through PUDs and, and things like that, just to be able to establish there, and so that was one of the, the areas that we went through and did, like, the large rezones and pretty much rezone the whole corridor to residential office, R4 zone. So we'll probably look at, looking at all those properties at some point in the future and, and kind of transitioning them out of the Ag Forest Zone. So taking a look at what we currently have within Ag Forest, so it's, you know, mainly agriculture, we allow accessory buildings incidental to agriculture, forestry, including raising, harvesting, sale of timber and other products, small sawmills, home occupations, single-family dwelling, daycares, bed and breakfast, boarding house, residential rental units, type-one accessory home occupations, and so a lot of it is, you know, it's is primarily a county zone that we ended up including within the city. And as those areas transition, you know, you don't have a whole lot of agricultural character within a lot of the areas within the city, just because they're a lot smaller of lots, and you end up with these remnant parcels. Conditional uses, self-service storage facility, we've got golf courses, stables, rod and gut clubs, resorts, antenna towers, airports, carnivals and circuses is kind of an odd one. Wastewater treatment plants, churches, schools, community centers, and small and large daycare facilities. You have feedlots, so right now, I think we allow feedlots up to 20 animals. Once you go above 20, up to 200, you gotta get a conditional use permit for the Board of Adjustment, and that's, you know, looking at, these uses are not necessarily uses that you typically see in city limits. You know, you usually don't have a feedlot in, in the middle of the city.
That would be an interesting fight to watch.
Yeah. And a sawmill, you know, I mean, it, you know, a lot, a lot of the sawmills we see, I, I mean, you have a lot of larger ones, but you have a lot of just kind of hobby sawmill, Jack Carpenter's up on Moscow Mill, and has a smaller, probably would be declared a sawmill, but it's pretty small scale, and so, but would you necessarily want a sawmill in, in city limits? Probably not, you know, so.
What's the fee associated with requesting a rezone? You mentioned there's a fee typically?
Yeah, I'd have to get the exact number, but I think it's around $750.
I'd say $740.
$740? Okay.
Thank you.
We have rural businesses, and so, you know, these have restrictions on them.
So they don't allow market gardens in the rural business, so?
Um, we don't, yeah, in Ag Forest, we don't allow market gardens, but it would probably be encompassed under just this agricultural use. I think when we did the urban ag ordinance, I think we just specifically left the named use out of here, just because it would be encompassed, you know, under agriculture.
Yeah. It's $770. Thank you.
But, yeah, rural business, you know, it, usually in residential zones, which Ag Forest is technically a residential zone, you generally don't see a whole lot of business activity except for our home occupation uses, and so, you know, this just kind of reflects the rural nature, you know, that's why it's called a rural business, is that it's less impact, because you have larger properties and less opportunity to have nuisances bother adjacent neighbors, just because of the amount of land you typically have in the county and the activity, and so, you know, this is just pretty much taken from, you know, a snapshot of the county's ordinance, back when we inserted it in our code, it was pretty similar. And then we also, we did, you know, when we did the accessory home occupation. And then we also, we did, you know, when we did the accessory home occupations ordinance, we, we did update this section as well and added type two accessory home occupations to conditional use. Those generally have onsite customer service and employing people that don't actually live at the residence, but I think we limited it to about two people. And so it's, you know, a little bit contradictory here. I mean, we've got a couple overlapping regulations that we just need to, you know, eventually eliminate the ag forest zone in the city and just rezone those and then just, you know, replace that with the county's ag forest. And then special uses, we've got RV parks and just our standard public service and utility facilities that aren't listed as, as permitted uses or conditional uses within the zone and then cemeteries. So looking at, and I've got a copy of the city's ag forest zone within your packet, I've also got the county's as well and so they have a little bit different of a structure to their zone zoning code than we do. Even today, you know, they have a lot of their regulations, design standards listed under each different type of use underneath the section, like wind turbines is a, is a big one. You know, they have all their, their design standard, development standards listed underneath that. Generally you'd see those listed, you know, in a different section of the code and just referenced and so it doesn't make the, the zone section that long, but they decided just to list all those underneath the zone, so it's actually a pretty, pretty long ag forest.
Yeah, so the one with all the wind turbine stuff is the county?
That's the county.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So they have a lot of, you know, there's a lot of similarities. So we have agronomy, animal husbandry. I think, you know, one distinction is just permitted uses by right, they allow up to two hundred and fifty animals. Once you go above that, you need to get some type of conditional use permit in order to get that approved, but, you know, this is primarily thinking of the area city impact and, you know, while that's great, further out into the county, I don't know that we necessarily want up to two hundred and fifty animals, you know, directly adjacent to city limits.
You know how many the, the university has at the dairy farm?
On the dairy farm?
Yeah.
I don't, no, I, that was actually, we were talking about that a little bit when we were, we were going over this, but.
Yeah, I mean, two hundred and fifty animal feedlot, that sounds huge to me.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you have, you think about southern Idaho and, and driving through, you know, the highway corridor there.
The magic of drone, yeah.
Royal City on the way to Seattle.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Quite an odor for a while, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, thinking about those impacts, I, I think that if we eventually adopt their ag forest, you know, that's probably one thing that we'd end up, you know, maybe making more consistent to what we currently have. Maybe it's, we allow up to twenty and then above twenty, up to two hundred, you have to get a conditional use permit in order to do that.
When do you anticipate the area of impact being adjusted again?
Uh, it was, you know, it's, really what we're waiting on is this use table ordinance and the comprehensive plan and so we're just wrapping both those things up. And so I'd imagine we'll start working on that this summer and probably have those negotiations this fall when everybody's back in town from, from summer break. But that's really, you know, kind of what spurred, you know, that's really what's delayed the negotiations up to this point, is that we wanted to get all these code amendments and the comp plan done in order to be able to, you know, renegotiate and have them adopt a lot of our, you know, the things that we've done. Also part of that's the ring road concept, so remember when we were going through chap, you know, chapter three of the comp plan, ended up, you know, from the multimodal transportation plan, kind of the cost benefit analysis only indicated that we should just have the ring road on the western quadrants of the city and then the northeast and the southeast. We were just going to follow existing roadway alignments with those. And so that was part of it, you know, they've, that's always been a point of contention is the, the ring road, especially in those quadrants. And, you know, after we had our large multimodal transportation plan done, which is recommending that we don't do that and we go to, you know, what the Transportation Commission recommended with more of just following existing roadways for those routes and those corridors, that was part of it. They, that was a large part is, is, you know, having those recommendations carry forward and then having them adopt it, you know, adopt those as part of the area city impact negotiations. So now that we're pretty much, you know, within the last month or two wrapping those, except for the comp plan, we'll need to go through our public open house process and, and public input process, but I imagine that we, you know, have the use table wrapped up here in the next month or two and then have the comp plan, you know, everything completed by this summer, so.
So you're interested in the open house being maybe sometime in the summer or waiting till the fall?
Uh, we want to hit it before the students leave town, so it'll probably be within the next, yeah, we'll, we'll sit down and lay that out, but it'll be within the next probably month, month and a half.
The U of I website says the dairy center has a hundred milking cows and roughly equal number of young stock, so it is right at two hundred.
And then they have sheep?
Yes, it's a different page.
Yep. So. That's, yeah, that's less than two hundred and fifty by far and it has a pretty, pretty good impact.
It does have a big, yeah, it does have a big impact.
About two hundred of them, so well.
And they're exempt from our regulations, but, but it just gives you an idea of, of, you know, the impact that something like that could have. And, and, you know, a lot of this is, I think that since we had taken a snapshot of what their ag forest zone was at that, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, a lot of these structures are going to be pretty similar, so a lot of these uses are, are the same, you know, accessory buildings, the support, kind of the agricultural uses, single family dwelling, home occupations, home occupations and they reference a different section. Their home occupations are a little bit more, I guess, liberal than ours, so they don't really define, you know, under our home occupations, there are things that you can't do, you know, list specific businesses that you can't operate from a home residence. And there's don't. It's pretty much any commercial or business activity and they allow up to six employees that don't live at the residence, whereas we limit it to two and then we restrict, you know, a lot of the things that, where you can't operate an auto body shop out of your garage type thing. And, and so that'll be, you know, probably another one of those things that we had identified that would probably be during the negotiations, probably take a look at and, and try to, you know, move it over to what we currently have or maybe something else.
Yeah. So just so I understand, so the final zoning regulations in the area of impact are just whatever the city and the county agrees?
Agree to.
Yeah, okay. So they can vary, they can?
Yeah, it, you know, it's passed by resolution, we have, and, and all the ordinances are attached to that resolution and so, yeah, we went to, I, I think this is prior to me getting here, but we had, you know, there, there were some cities in the state of Idaho where they were ju, the county was just giving all authority to the city and the area city impact. And that was down in the Treasure Valley was the Supreme Court case that said that you can't do that, the, you know, city makes recommendations to the county as far as what they would recommend doing, you know, based upon the code, the code that they've adopted, you know, mutually. And then the county has ultimate authority and enforcement within the area city impact and so.
So they have, the county has to agree to it and they're in?
County has to, yeah. County's the ultimate say, so, you know, city can make a recommendation, but the, the county has the ultimate authority to do whatever they want essentially in the area city impact. And so that was, you know, we, I think we had a ordinance and, or a resolution with the mutual agreement in two thousand and four and then I think it was amended in two thousand and six, but, yeah, that, that's, it was pretty much the snapshot of the city's zoning code at that time. And they adopted like our subdivision ordinance, our mobile home ordinance, our RV park ordinance and then the zoning code with some exceptions, like the lighting that we talked about.
Don't want to get too far off into the weeds, but do you know if, is, the county have the same requirements for updating the comp plan? Their comp plan that we do, that the city does?
They do, yeah. It, comp plans follow under the same step, you know, state statute and whether or not you're a county or a city, you're still subject to the same requirements.
I'm just kind of wondering if they're doing any, any zoning ordinance revisions and comp plan revisions on their side to like, like the city is on?
I think they have a fairly new comp plan. Their zoning ordinances, they have, I think the most recent update was a couple of years ago and it was in the ag forest zone where they allowed, it used to be that you, you had to have forty acres in order to be able to divide, you know, divide any parcels and they had to be at least one acre in size. They've since reduced that to ten acres to allow for more kind of development in the county and that'll be something, you know, we'll have to talk about as well and, you know, what effect that would have in the area city impact, but I know they went through a revision a couple of years ago and then they're also inserted a provision in order to transfer, transfer building permits. So it's like almost a T D R, transfer development rights. There, you're able to transfer off of, you know, maybe plateau land that don't have as much fertile soil.
Yeah.
And, and, and cluster it and, and work with it that way. And so I know that they've updated that within the last couple of years.
Yeah.
And so they went through it, but comp plan, they're required, you know, the, the only thing that state law says is that you have to take a look at it pretty much every ten years, but other than that, you know, I mean, and it doesn't really specify, you know, what review means. I mean, could be somebody just opening it up and looking at it and that would satisfy it, you know, it's always been pretty vague.
Yeah.
You know, as far, as far as those requirements, so. And they have what they call an administrative zoning permit and so it's, it's not a public hearing, it's pretty much just at the staff level, but allows them to implement conditions if there's going to be any, you know, maybe nuisance issues or, you know, just service issues of whatever the uses, allows them to review that and, and make recommendations and conditions and put those on these administrative zoning permits and, and they do that for additional single family dwellings, accessory cottage housing. Their accessory cottage housing is similar to our A D U ordinance.
Yeah, it is similar, except it's bigger square footage.
Yeah, bigger square footage is, and they don't have the owner occupancy restriction on, on theirs. So those are, I think, the, the two distinctions that I saw when I was looking through it. Public parks, water treatment facilities, bed and breakfast, public buildings, utility structures and communication towers, you know, all things that are pretty similar to our ordinance. Conditional uses, agriculture and forestry related commercial or industrial business with more than five full-time employees. Here we have the feedlots that, you know, have more than two hundred and fifty animal units and so they'd go through a conditional use permit process, campgrounds and RV parks, dog boarding, public buildings, dams and power plants, communication tower and transmission facilities, mineral resource developments. So that's probably something, even though I don't think we have a large cache of geological, you know, for, maybe in the southwest corner, I think is about the, you know, the Germer property there, I think would be about the only area that'd be, you know, you'd look at doing some mining at over there and so we'd probably have to take a look at, you know, what their mineral resource and development section, when they discuss mining and, and things like that, take a look at that and, you know, that's probably something that, you know, we would want to limit or control within the area city impact.
Yeah. And the other, the other thing I noticed, like the outdoor sports training centers, what are shooting ranges? How do they file in under that? I mean, are they an outdoor sports shooting or an outdoor sports training center or do they have their own special little slot?
Yeah, I mean, they have gun clubs listed, so I'd imagine the gun club would fall, I mean, with our gun clubs, I think we require those to be indoors and, you know, archery and shooting ranges would our, excuse me, would be our use within the city. You know, the gun club, I would imagine that's just your typical shooting range, you know, out, out there in the county. And outdoor sports training centers, I'd venture to say that that's probably like tr, you know, tracks and.
Yeah, yeah.
And things like that is, is what that would be.
Yeah. I mean, even, even where we are, there's been problems a couple of times because people think that, because they're out of the city and two acre residential parcels, that means they can go sight in their rifles and then you find out that a slope like that actually does a nice ricochet.
Yeah.
So the next thing you know, you're hearing that lovely.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, I mean, you, you're probably in the area city impact, but our police regulations end at city limits. You know, they certainly could, you know, as part of the A C I agreement, they could probably carry over some of those police regulations, but you probably don't have, you know.
Yeah.
Those regulations out in the county where, where you're limited to what, you know, projectiles and things like that.
It's always worked out because luckily everybody knows everybody out there, so you just kind of go.
Hey.
See? Knock this off.
Um, airports, solid waste facilities, cemeteries, we get into, start getting into residential wind turbines, so they have a really big section on that.
Yeah, they sure do.
Yeah.
Interesting, yeah.
I think that they, you know, that was maybe a proactive stance looking at Whitman County. Yeah, they went through a lot of resistance to wind turbines over there and they went through their ordinance to allow them and put restrictions on them and so I would venture to say that they probably, you know, emulated what, what they had done in Whitman County expecting that it was going to start creeping over the border, so. But yeah, they have, you know, single family residential wind turbines, which are a lot smaller in scale and then you've got the commercial multiple residential and, and other types of wind turbines that they cover as well. And then they allow, you know, kind of duplicate the section for accessory cottage housing just to give you an opportunity to get a conditional use permit for, it looks like an increase in square footage. So they limit it, I think, at somewhere around nine, nine hundred and so you can get a conditional use permit for a little bit larger of accessory cottage unit within that zone. And then salvage wrecking and junkyards occurring outside of fully enclosed building, you know, that's probably something that we would, you know, during the negotiations, try to get that, you know, struck from the agreed upon ordinance. Just more of a, you know, nuisance issue that, you know, I don't know we'd want directly adjacent to the city. And then mini storage units, RV storage, similar to what we have, public parks that have overnight accommodations, commercial kitchens, food processing operations, small scale retail sales and rental shops directly related to recreation in Leighton County and in proximity to recreational sites, which is a little vague, you know, it probably, I mean, you could, you would expect that maybe you could have an ATV dealership because they, you know, ATVing would be a recreation in Leighton County. Maybe just a little general, you know, general wording that we might take a look at as well. And a wastewater treatment facility, so. Pretty much sums up all those uses and I think we'll probably go through this, you know, just wanted to give you a comparison of what our ag forest zone is compared to theirs and then kind of the distinction between in the city and then in the area city impacted in the county and what we're likely going to take a look at as far as the negotiations. But in the interim, I've just gone ahead and put ag forest zone in the use table and I pretty much just copied what we currently have, you know. I pretty much just copied what we currently have, you know, had the uses within our zoning code and just dropped them into the appropriate categories. Most of them make sense and it's pretty clear. There are, you know, I just copied these over and we currently have kind of this animal slaughtering and processing and we currently have sawmills. I'm a little, you know, even though those don't really, aren't really appropriate for in the city limits, I'd probably be a little hesitant just to take them completely out right now and so I think those two, we'd probably end up just moving over to the conditional use permit category so they go through that process instead of just permitted by right. And then as we work to rezone those properties, we'll eventually just drop the whole Ag Forest column from the chart and we can do that after we've worked through kind of those rezones and so that was pretty much my plan. But I don't know if you had, you know, had a chance to take a look at some of the uses. Most are what we have right now, you know, golf courses, country clubs, riding stables, veterinary services, pet care services, and then a whole host of institutional uses. A lot of the time I just ended up carrying over what the farm ranch zone had just because they're so similar and that's likely what, you know, some of these properties will end up being. Farm ranch is pretty much underutilized anyway in the city, but well, that's probably the zone that we'll end up keeping for those types of uses and so when in doubt, I just ended up, you know, carrying over the farm ranch and so that's what, you know, the majority of it is, so. Any questions? I don't have any. So that'll be, we'll get this tied into the use table ordinance and then the only other thing I think that needs to be inserted is just in, if you recall, chapter two, we go through all the purpose statements. We'll just have to add the same purpose statement for Ag Forest that we have in our current zone and we'll just have to insert that in there, but that'll really be the only changes is just amending the use table. We have the bulk and dimensional table that I've already went and dropped in, the Ag Forest column in that as well and so we should, those are really the only changes, just to, you know, put Ag Forest in there for the time being, so other than that, it pretty much stays the same.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or anything? So you will meet with you and, and city staff will meet with staff from Leighton County? Is that how that works?
Yeah, well, I think we'll, we'll begin by, yeah, just our staff and their staff meeting to discuss these issues and then ultimately we have joint meetings between county commissioners and our city council in order to, you know, go over what the negotiations are gonna be.
Oh, okay, great. So does that take care of basically five annexes or did you have more use table ordinance?
Um, I, I just wanted to, if anybody had any follow-up questions, I sent the email out trying to clarify a little bit about the NIACS table and I just thought I'd give you an idea because sometimes it's hard to visualize how this works with the NIACS numbers and definitions and so, you know, instead of, a lot of times we'll have, so if you look in the table right now, we have warehousing and storage and then it gives you the NIACS number which is four ninety-three. In lieu of adding all of these subcategories which would make our zoning code like triple the size, that's the way they work, you know, is, is that you have all these different uses that are underneath this main category. So warehousing and storage and then you have, you know, general warehousing and storage, refrigerated warehousing and storage, farm product warehousing and storage and then other warehousing and storage. And so what you essentially do is, you know, go out to the Census Bureau website for the NIACS definitions. If it's unclear and, and I mean, it, most of this, depending upon the use, is fairly clear, but in some circumstances you may have to go out and take a look at what the subcategories are. You know, in this case, under warehousing and storage, we have all these subcategories. You pull that up and then you can, you know, you click on farm product warehousing and storage and that gives you, you know, kind of a definition of what makes up that category. It gives you kind of these corresponding indexes and cross-reference establishments. So the farm product warehousing and storage, the industry comprises establishments primarily engaged in operating bulk farm product warehousing and storage facilities except refrigerated which are in that other category. So the refrigerated ones are right here just under a different subcategory. They're still contained within storage and warehousing, they're just in a different section. Grain elevators primarily engaged in storage are included in this industry. So that'll be, you know, essentially how this'll work if there's a question whether or not there's, you know, a specific subsector of a use. And this, you know, makes it pretty clear because now we don't have to argue about whether or not agricultural storage bins are included within that use because they break it out in so much detail that you can go there and see that they're included and it's pretty clear-cut. So that's the, that's the nice thing about these NIACS industrial classification systems and, you know, as you can see, it's pretty much the same across Canada, Mexico and the United States, all the industries are compatible and so we have this universal, you know, kind of classification system that is recognized in all these countries and so that's kind of the, one of the advantages.
Yeah. So if our, if our ordinance is like referred to a four ninety-three NIACS number, then all of the subcategories that are in that are included, they're in that, yeah.
Unless we specifically excluded it and so if you recall looking at the table, you know, some we specifically excluded from that list, but we have them listed there which ones we're excluding.
Yeah.
And sometimes the use that's listed is only not necessarily this, you know, main sector, it's one of these subsectors, so maybe we don't want refrigerated warehousing, we don't want general warehousing, we just want farm warehousing and so we would just list this longer number under the farm product warehousing and that would be the only use, so.
Yeah.
And then I think Victoria had the question about the archery shooting ranges. In the police code, portion of the city code, we call it projectiles, so I think that's an easy fix. Instead of, you know, specifically designed for the discharging of firearms at targets, we just say projectiles at targets and that, I think, solution to that problem, so fairly straightforward. And that pretty much wraps up my use table.
Okay. Well, that brings us to shared readings and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read the piece on density. Let's see, with that, I had, I was looking at a couple of other articles and we were, we were talking in the comprehensive plan about the possibility of in-migration because of climate, I think it was on the climate change section, but it's interesting to note, I, the spokesman recently had an, well, sort of recently, had an article about Idaho population forecast and it's hard to know exactly channeling into Leighton County or Moscow what that might be, but between July twenty sixteen and July twenty seventeen, Idaho was the fastest growing state in the United States. It was two point two percent, which is substantially higher than point seven-two percent nationwide. So that is an indicator that there may be some growth pressure and, you know, what, we don't know, but whether that'll sustain or not and it's mostly not due to higher birth rates or lower death rates, but due to domestic migration, so.
I always wonder about, like, that statistic, is that, is that really saying that Boise, Coeur d'Alene and Idaho Falls are, you know, some of the fastest-growing cities in the United States?
It's possible.
They are.
Yeah, it's possible, but that's what they're saying, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I bet, I bet you Bennoah County didn't grow by
Right, right. No, it's not, it's not evenly spread over the state. It's concentrated and they do say Cootenay County.
Actually, Cootenay County is the top, it's like two point two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls.
Yeah.
Rathrum.
Yeah.
I feel heard that's been dubbed the Silver Tsunami.
And it's, yeah, it's retirees, it's retirees, so where do retirees wanna move?
We prefer the
Around recreation usually. But, you know, because it's a retiree population, I can envision us getting some of that eventually, you know, because of the, having a university is, seems to be a draw, but I guess we'll find out. Because it also says with biggest gain in retirees, so that's the population that's gaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Mike's parents, other people find out. So it's kind of an interesting article in that, in that case and, anyway, so, so does that, you know, suggest that maybe retirees might not wanna live in, you know, bigger houses and might want more of the cottage-type style housing that Nils is trying to promote and is trying to get us to look at in the code, which is one of the reasons we started looking at, at articles about density because we've been getting correspondence from, from him about that, smaller lot development, smaller house, square footage, because we have sort of a minimum square footage that, isn't it like, we have a big minimum square footage.
For a house?
Yeah, and I'm spacing out what it is at the moment, but it's.
Well, for a manufactured home, it's a thousand square feet, but any other house, it would just be what the building code dictates, which is, I think, two hundred and ninety square feet is the minimum.
Oh, okay, somehow I misunderstood that one. Okay, but at any rate, smaller parcel subdivision, it was one of the things he was putting. And so looking at, just in, in terms of a discussion about density, I know when I worked with my students in rural communities throughout Washington and Idaho, et cetera, and go in and, and I tell the students, don't use the D-word, you know, because it scares people. I mean, just density by itself is not necessarily a good thing and, and it has to be sort of accompanied by thoughtful practices and, and I think this article, at least from my point of view, does a good job of starting to make that argument, that it's, that's, you sell it not because of density for its own sake, but because the quality of life issues come into it and can, it can facilitate some possibilities that lower density development doesn't, so. So, anyway, what, what, did anybody have any questions or comments on?
I found it interesting that one of the articles in there talked about the tax revenue from one of the developments and it tracked right with what Nils was saying about, you know, they, you collect a much higher share or you get a lot more value in a lot smaller area, you collect
You generate more rent.
And then it, it gets spread over less infrastructure to support a higher density. So that's, I mean, that's a real push for the city to go along with it. The interesting one I've seen too is, is just from being on P and Z here and like with the ADUs and with the, the development down, you know, right near the Tri-Highway, you know, right near, right at the creek, I forget what the name of it is.
Identity.
Identity, yeah. How often parking becomes a big deal, you know, I mean, we're embarked on an experiment with them on, does it work to, to cut the parking way back? But with the ADUs, that was a lot of, a lot of the discussion, you know, people in their neighborhoods worrying about the parking, but, but, you know, you throw on top of that, you know, I bet in the next, you know, fifteen years from now that half the cars out there are gonna be driving themselves and, and they can, you can fit a lot more self-driving cars onto the same roads and then you can tell them to go park on the edge of town, you know, when they're done. So that's gonna totally change all of the assumptions, I think, about, about how much parking is necessary, how much space is necessary for roads and where the parking is, all of that, so.
Well, I like how most of these case studies always have what the parking is.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on the, the value of the real estate, it's either underground or surface, depending on, yeah, which obviously, yeah.
Totally, yeah. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of the prices they cite are from like nineteen ninety-eight and, you know, so I imagine that, I mean, a lot of these prices are probably quadrupled.
Well, because of those dates, I went and looked up all, almost all of these developments to see what current units were selling for or houses and in most cases, there's nothing for sale, they're fully, a hundred percent, there's nothing on the market or they're substantially more expensive than they, than they were here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean,
Two hundred thousand, six hundred thousand.
Yeah, 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 so it's, but I, but I agree with you, one of the things I highlighted was the seven percent of the county's land areas, high-density development, it generates thirty-three percent of the county's real estate taxes. That's kinda like the whole argument with all of the buildings downtown because they're essentially high-density, they generate a lot more tax revenue than sprawling Walmarts or whatever. I mean, it's, it's kind of interesting in that respect, but.
Well, even our residential, I mean, we've always subsidized our residential and the commercial is what does that, you know, everything commercial-wise in downtown, you know, we don't get near the taxes that we get out of a single-family residential lot that we do for, you know, commercial property, so it's always evened it out.
And so it's, you know, and the other thing is just not having to pay for extension of infrastructure, you get more efficient with, with that if it's, if the community retains its sort of more compact form. And that's, there's, there've been a lot of studies of cost ratios and, you know, that residential development doesn't generally pay for itself, yeah, especially as it gets less dense. And, let's see, um, any, anybody, I, I had a, I don't wanna dominate the conversation, but I had a.
So what I noticed is, especially these pictures, they're all really nice areas and a lot of this is very attractive as a, as a new area that's going to have that kind of density cottages and, you know, so on and so forth. And parking is brought up all the time and it is brought up all the time at public hearings. The thing that bothers me, and, and you're supposed to have all these amenities, you're supposed to be creating greater community and little shops and things that people are interrelating, but a lot of what we have here is apartments, student apartments going in and it's infill and then, and then, so you have a house in front and then you cram in a student apartment building back behind it and, like over on Almond Street and it's not, you're not creating any kind of community and you're just shoeboxing these things in and it devalues anybody who has a home and I don't see it, I don't see it following, I see, I mean, yes, it reduces infrastructure and it does a lot of those good things, but, but it doesn't follow through and, and do some of the amenities that need to go with it because one of the statements in here
Yeah, and it even
Is that if you don't do it right, you've really messed it up.
Right.
There's a lot of not doing it right.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of these projects are really large, you know, like just those smaller, you know.
Yes, these are.
Yeah. I mean, it, those infill lots like that are, you know, there's not a whole lot of opportunity to have community features if it's just like a, you know, flagpole lot off the back end of a lot. I think where that comes into play is when you start having these really large sites that, you know, some of these you think about like Legacy Crossing, you know, and there, I mean, there was one that talked about kind of this opportunity just because, you know, in one circumstance, there was just two neighborhoods and they were able to join these two residential neighborhoods
With a gap.
By having this, you know, mixed-use commercial area and it was, you know, and it's similar to what we, University and Downtown and ability to, to join those and, you know, that's why the city had done the Legacy Crossing District in order to try to shape that development that happens between the University and Downtown.
So there, yeah, I, I was trying to find parallels in the case studies where it was possible and Legacy Crossing is, is obviously one and the other one, even the Dumaseed site, what's happened with that? For example, where they tore down all that, the, on A, is, is anything happening there?
Yeah, yeah, they're just planning right now, but a local developer's purchased that and is looking at doing some condominium, you know, but it's gonna be like mixed-use, I think it I think it they're planning on some type of restaurant use and then more of higher-scale condominiums.
Because to me, that had some equivalency with the Belmont Dairy redevelopment site, even though that was probably a bigger site, it's still kind of the same, repurposing a an infill site like that that had an industrial use.
Because it's a brownfield. Every time you reclaim a brownfield and put it to good use, it's good. Yeah, that's a big enough site that you can do something good, you know, do something really nice.
Well, part, yeah, you know, part of that's trying to extend Lilian out and just, you know, have a pedestrian connection. So you tie, what is it, Second Street there all the way, you know? Because Second Street currently doesn't go through. And then, you know, trying to continue that pedestrian extension for what what we had done to the linear park there. So that's when you start getting the opportunities, the larger sites and, you know, the ones that maybe require Parkland dedication, but you can leverage.
Yeah, it mentions Parkland.
Instead of land, make community features, you know, play areas and those sidewalk extensions where they're feasible. But, you know, part of that is it's nice thing is it's located in the urban renewal district. So there, you know, the URA can help with all the infrastructure, you know, that surround that property, so.
And then, you know, some of the case studies, like I felt like the Wellington neighborhood one really was pertinent to Sandpoint and Court Lane because resort amenity towns that don't have workforce housing available and were a little more maybe affordable. But, you know, we can always do better in that score as well. And we we do have some, I can't, out near the traffic circle, that development around Green. I mean, there, that area to me sort of emulated some of the some of the tight style of development where people can afford to get into a house and have, you know, and have more of a sense of community than just.
That seemed like the Third Street, you know, when they talk about Third Street cottages. I mean, that seemed like some of those PUDs that like Tambo Commons or Green Ankers that we have out there.
Right, right.
On White Avenue. Only they, you know, have developed this cottage ordinance that appears that they allow, you know, within just single-family zones that limits the square footage of the homes, but allows more compact development. I mean, here we would go through a planned unit development, like the ones out on White Avenue were done in order to create that. But, you know, that's the question is, do we continue just to go through the planning and development process? Or do we try to codify, you know, something that that looks like what they have done in order to just allow that by right, you know?
Right, and that that interests me, I mean, and that's what Nils is, I guess, pushing for. And what's interesting about the Third Street cottages is that's, I went to the architect's website on that. And the architect is Russ Chap, Ross Chap, Chapin. And and he has a nice little article about what's needed in those types of developments. But then, and they call them pocket neighborhoods, then he lists like twenty more that they've done since this one. So and and to me, it had a kind of a nice equivalency, even though Langley is tiny. I mean, it's small, way smaller than Moscow. But having that opportunity, I, you know, what what would be the advan- from your point of view, what would be the advantages or disadvantages to making it stay in the PUD realm or enabling it by right to do that type of development?
Well, yeah, I mean, the the PUD realm, I think that you have, you have some more, obviously, some more control over the outcome of the project. You know, you're able to solicit public opinion from the neighbors. You have a, you know, pretty specific public process that you have to go through. And and maybe you get better outcomes after hearing concerns and and, you know, instead of, you know, meeting the requirements and you're done, you get kind of the feedback, you know, back and forth. And maybe that gives you an opportunity to have a better product in the outcome or in the better outcome in the final product. You know, disadvantages would be the cost of going through planning and development.
Is that a big inhibitor, do you think, for most of?
Not necessarily the cost of the application, but the cost to develop the plans. Because, you know, you have to do elevations, you have to, you know, you pretty much have to make this large investment for all the plans of everything that's going to be built and not necessarily super detailed civil plans, but enough detail to know it's going to work. And you got to do this upfront without knowing whether or not you're going to get approved for the project. And so, you know, those are, you know, what you think of when, you know, and then that's why a lot of the, you know, the these cottage develop, you know, maybe these housing ordinances try to be real design-heavy in order to, you know, get a lot of those elements that you would maybe see the outcome for public hearings. And instead of, you know, requiring the developer to go through all this process, you know, it kind of just lays down the ground rules. And if you meet all these requirements, then, you know, you pretty much get approved. And so that's why, you know, I can't remember what we were looking at recently, but I mean, it was just a ton of develop, you know, development, design standards that they needed to meet in order to do it, so.
Would that be identity, you mean?
No, I I thought we were looking at it, but I think it was somebody else. We had, I we were, maybe it was just us in the office looking at just some codes. And it was it was recently a lot of, you know, you looked at the sections and it was just a whole lot of design requirements as far as, you know, things that you'd see in design guidelines, like architectural detail, you know, relation to common open space, pedestrian pass connections, landscaping, you know? It was just really detail-oriented.
Well, and for example, it is Ross Chapin, and this might be to some degree what you're talking about for the Third Street cottages and then all the other pocket subdivision or communities, cottage communities he's done since. He lays out essential design keys and one is layering from public to private, having that that realm of sidewalk to house well-defined, but having like porch, elements like porches to create the transition. And nested houses so that when they're closer together, this house may not look into this house's side yard, but this, you know, so you're you're kind of getting privacy on one side so you can be closer together. And everybody facing the common space that might be a part of the community. And corralling the cars, another thing he says, whatever that means, make just not making it so dominant in the design. And mailbox clusters and and the scale of the house being one and a half stories. So they're smaller, but they're not just, you know, so there's, and then individuality. So there's a lot of, I mean, that's what, these are the parameters that, and simple materials with detail. And living large in a small house is what, you know? So I think, yeah, they they obviously have the the design guidelines that kind of go with it.
It was Spokane's cottage housing.
Oh. Spokane, where in Spokane, I wonder? Oh, just in their ordinance, you mean?
Yeah, just in their recent cottage housing, cottage housing ordinance. They had, I think, some recommended changes, but they had a couple of sheets that we can take a look at, you know? I mean, maybe we look at them. There, I mean, it's like four sheets that kind of go over the, you know, has some illustrations and then just goes over, I think, some changes. I think they previously had some cottage housing ordinances and they're looking at doing some updates in order to get, I think, them utilized a little bit more, so.
Yeah, but I think one of the things, you know, we need to remember here, I mean, yeah, these are great developments and stuff and they're a really nice place to live. You know, we've got, though, a a big student population and it kind of, it's sort of the nightmare version of what Victoria's getting. You know, it's got to be way cheaper to be in the right zone and blow out an old, you know, eighty-year-old single-family house and pop up twelve apartments using a, you know, the finest of vinyl siding and a pull it off the off the internet set of plans. But I think for a lot of students, it's, you know, if it saves them a couple of hundred bucks a month while they're in school for that two to four years, you know, that's probably going to be more important than that you do have a really nice place. But I I do, the other side is I kind of wonder how much rental prices are, if there's that much variation between, you know, one of these nicer developments or the the vinyl villas? Or is it just a complete market set price, you know, where the the costs of development don't make that much difference after a couple of years?
In my experience, is location is a very big factor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know the part of town that you're talking about and I live over there actually and know people who have lived there and they're pretty much comparable to some of the other stuff you would find, even though the quality of the housing isn't great.
Yeah, so it's just close to the university?
Yeah, I think the people who were living there, who had backyards, are paying the same amount. They just now have a giant house in their backyard.
Giant house in the backyard.
A lot of them are not super thrilled, but it rotates every year, so.
And I mean, that's, I think, that's the danger they were talking about, about bad density is is when you start just slapping up.
Well, you look at Pullman, I mean, it has acres and acres and acres of my, it reminds me of going to a Soviet city back in the seventies or something, except it's a little lower scale. Yeah, it's sort of, anyway, I mean, just not all Pullman, but just, and I don't know.
But, yeah, and over there too, it's such a different scale because they got a, you know, twenty-five thousand students at the university in a town of, what, twenty thousand or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We we have accommodated ours better. I mean, and we've integrated, but it's a guys, we have a half the student population and that helps, I think.
But, yeah, I think the big opportunity for the nicer developments is Legacy Crossing. And I mean, it seems like that's what a whole lot of the design standards were for is to is to prevent it just turning into a little slice of nothing but apartment.
Right. Well, it was interesting to look at, I decided to look at the densities of some of these places too, the actual densities of the cities that they're in. Moscow had, except for Seattle, Moscow had the highest density. We have, what, thirty-six ninety-three per square mile according to, I just use Wikipedia on all these. So it's based on the twenty-ten census, so it may be off a little bit. Boise is only twenty-seven eighteen. I knew we were denser than Boise, you know, and those, that's a good thing, really. Seattle is the most dense, eighty-three ninety-eight. And Seattle has done a tremendous amount of transformation from single-family to denser.
Condo.
Condo development and replacement and along corridors in particular.
What did you say we are, Wendy?
Uh, we're thirty-six ninety-three per square mile. Breckenridge is only eight seventeen, so it's pretty sprawling and that explains why it's expensive. You know, the lots are too big probably and the houses are probably ginormous and occupy one week a year.
They probably have a lot of conservation easements, you know, that restrict in Breckenridge. I mean, that's what happens when you go to Sun Valley, Ketchum. I mean, you look at the number of, you know, land that's held in in land trust or conservation.
Oh, okay, that.
And it's just enormous, you know?
Well, Ben, I mean, some of these I just looked just because I was curious, because I know Ben from driving through it every year is pretty sprawling and it's twenty-three twenty-one, so it's got a relatively low density in there to us. And that's what you, that's how it manifests a lot of times. Langley is nine fifty-eight, but it's a tiny place. I mean, you know, so it's a little town that, and then Sandpoint is about two thousand per square mile, so. Yeah, with, that would be sort of the Breckenridge of Idaho, I suppose, or well, Sun Valley would be. So anyway, yeah, just it's just interesting to, I I knew that Moscow had a relative, I think Moscow might even be equivalent with LA because LA is pretty sprawling. I forgot to look it up, but I remember when I was teaching urban theory, I did that comparison in there. LA is pretty sprawling and and low-density. And that's what happens, you know? And so it's, it's density isn't such a bad thing, but. Anyway, I was just curious what you thought of the ideas and I guess, yeah, Legacy Crossing does seem to be, you know, one of the obvious places, I guess, where some of this could be implemented. But also just looking at, you know, I've been getting correspondence from Nils because of his initiatives and, you know, how, and just thinking about it, how do you accommodate smaller footprint houses and smaller lot development without compromising the sort of character of the community? And what does it, you know, is it necessarily bad, you know, or?
Well, a lot of the developments of that type look pretty good.
Yeah.
They're pretty good, you know? And identity is, has a lot of amenities that are going in there too. So then you do bring in some of that higher-quality community aspect to it. So it isn't just shoeboxing in apartments in the backyard, you know, kind of thing. You are.
It almost looks European, the way it's going, I mean, you know, and it's sort of.
So those are kinds of things that that I would think work and work well. But this stresses all the way too. You have to design it, it has to be done right or it's a nightmare.
Right, density by, you know, density for density's sake is not a good thing, you know, basically that it needs to have design to make it happen.
And clearly, parking is an issue that's brought up all the time.
Yeah, and but one recurring theme is that when you do have, I mean, getting our student populations living closer to campus means less traffic going back and forth with vehicular traffic anyway. And fewer parking spaces around town to accommodate everything that you would do with, that you can do on foot or with a bike, you know?
It means to be seen whether they're going to park the cars and not use them or if they're going to leave the cars at home, wherever home is, and free up the streets.
Four years from now, if anybody who was on planning and zoning when identity was approved shouldn't walk through the neighborhoods close to it at night, yeah. We'll find out.
Well, I mean, the high school honestly demonstrates the absorption capacity of of Moscow city street system every day of the week, you know? And and so, well, not every day, but five days a week, so.
Well, and that is also a little other minor thing is that if if streets are built with, you know, good on-street parking, that if it's correct, that the number and use of cars is going to go down seriously in the next twenty years, I mean, you can you can convert that parking space as needed. And it might be fairly nice to be able to, okay, well, we've got few enough cars now. We can pull the parking off of one side of the street and throw in the bike lane, you know, separated bike lane or or, you know, make it into a little linear pocket park or even, you know, start closing some streets.
Right. Well, I think one of the underlying themes of this this article is that if you don't provide choices, all you have is the choice of using your car. And it, and so having and not, and doesn't mean that it's for everybody, but not having, and just like retirees don't necessarily want to move into a three thousand square foot house, you know? And and so I think getting that diversity of housing types, getting and and walk, connection to walkable neighborhoods and and commercial is, I mean, we're pretty lucky, we have a pretty central downtown, so it's accessible from multiple directions, but anyway.
I think we should pass an ordinance too that all new construction has to have a sticker on it for how many hours of vacuuming it takes people all the way through this.
There was, I can't find it now, there, there was a paragraph in here too that said not to make it all one type.
Right, 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 having.
What you were saying, having choices.
Having housing choices.
But you need to have diversity in in the types of density you're using and not just one type.
Right, which I have problems with what you see in Pullman where it's just acres and acres and acres of these huge.
We tend to have more of a intermixing of twin homes or single-family. I mean, you look at Alturis, Indian Hills Six, there's, you know, you have on Alturis from the park, you have all twin homes and then some townhouses. And then it transitions to single-family. And then on the other side of that, they're building multifamily. And so, you know, our residential's been fairly, I mean, you get east of Mountain View and and you do have primarily single-family neighborhoods. But a lot of the, you know, newer kind of these infill developments, we end up seeing this mixture.
Yeah.
I mean, odds are it's, the town's never going to get less dense, you know, from here on out.
But I thought, you know, just looking through the, a lot of times it's just hard to comprehend what, you know, the density looks like, forty-three units per acre, you know, what does that look like on the ground? Forty-three units per acre, you know, what does that look like on the ground? And I don't, you know, this is like fifty slides, but.
Oh, you've got some examples, great. Oh, good.
Yeah.
But if we don't, you know, we could either put this off till next meeting or I could just kind of flip through, you know, this real quickly. You don't need to spend a whole lot of time. We've just gone through and this was from two thousand ten, I think, is when we put this together, so. We didn't put Green Acres in there, but we do have, I think, Folkstone, Camden Court, Tambo, The Villages. You know, an older area town. We've got a newer R-two, Rolling Hills. You know, this is primarily on Baker Street apartment complex. So it, it just kind of gives you an idea, you know, Christopher's Crossing, we start out with kind of more suburban type development. You know, these are the kind of acre lots that you see out on Orchard. This is Hershey, Christopher's Cro, you know, Christopher Lane. Down here, I think it's Highland and we got Lanny, Lanny with Peekaboo Estates, which is, you know, kind of similar. But yeah, you look at the net density, it's pretty much one dwelling unit per acre. And this is what it looks like, you know, it's, it's kind of a rural standard with, with really large houses. Pheasant Run, kind of in that same area, it's off of Orchard. I think this is further to the north. It's close to city limits boundary, but pretty similar, you know, it's just pretty much one street with a cul-de-sac at the end. Little over one dwelling unit per acre. Some pictures of, you know, kind of what that looks like. Ridgeview Estates, this is east side of town off of Troy Highway, two point one four dwelling units per acre. So still pretty, pretty large lots. Rolling Hills Seventh, so looking over here. So starting to get into, you know, those subdivisions were primarily suburban residential. Ridgeview is, I think, R-one and now this is R-two. So we're starting to get a little bit smaller of a lot size. You know, generally this is pretty common to, you know, as far as the, the least dense development, I think, that we have seen the last ten years is primarily.
Oh, really?
You know, the, you're not really seeing the really large lots, you know, a whole lot anymore. It's primarily a R-two. In order to be able to make it, you know, pencil out for the developer, so.
I wonder what the square footage comparison is, because one of the things we've found whenever in buying and selling houses in the last few years is that square footage drives everything. I mean, it drives appraisal. It used to be location, location, location and now it's like, so banks sort of encourage these humongous houses when people don't really need them, you know. So how, do you have any ideas square footage wise, how one of these houses would compare with the ones on one acre? They're quite a bit smaller, you can't really tell from.
Yeah, I'd say these are probably within, you know, twenty-five hundred, three thousand range. Yeah, the ones that, you know.
The other ones look like they were five thousand.
Yeah, maybe.
Four, five thousand.
Four, four.
There's some pretty big houses up there. I mean, I, I think they certainly at least overlap on some of them.
Yeah, I'd say the commons probably about twenty-five hundred, three thousand, you know, somewhere, somewhere in that range. But yeah, this is, you know, a lot of the homes are of similar size, scale. Quail Run Second, so this is kind of older. This is up north, north side of town. Ninety-nine is when it was platted, three point seven six dwelling units per acre. This is also R-two zoned.
And so that density, isn't that about where their starting point was for some of the developments in here, saying that they were trying to double it from three and a half to seven or eight, yeah, per acre in some cases and, yeah, so.
So a little bit smaller, you know, homes. This is the, so this is in South Gate, but this is, I think, I don't think they went through a PUD. This is just another subdivision, but it's smaller lots. This is out by the Roundabout, White Avenue.
Yeah, that's getting up to seven.
Yeah, they start, you know, getting up to seven and the only odd thing is just this really large alley. You know, the alley's about as wide as the street and so, which is a great design. I mean, you have all the houses. It's more of this traditional neighborhood design with the houses facing the street and then you have the alley access.
Why is it so wide? Is it?
I don't know. I, yeah, I, I don't know if that was, I doubt that that was a requirement at the time, but maybe it was, but. Yeah, I mean, you look at it and it, I mean, you look at the width of the street and then you look at the width of the alley, it's pretty much the width. It just, it's just odd that it's that wide.
I mean, just the aerial photo, it doesn't look, to me, it doesn't look particularly denser than Quail, the Quail Run did, but.
Yeah, I mean, it is, yeah, I mean, you can see, well, part of it is the layout of the streets, you know, you have some, obviously that it's going to be extended further to the north here, you know, and you've got some cul-de-sacs in here because of topography preventing those from going through. Here it's relatively flat and you've got more of this traditional and so it, you know, brings the density yes, up because you've got less infrastructure. I mean, you know, surrounded by streets, but you've pretty much got, you know, just, just more standard, traditional kind of grid pattern layout.
Well, they don't have garages in the front and that all, right?
Yeah, they're all, they're all alley loaded, so they're all alley, you know, off the back.
So that enables you, I think, to make it smaller.
Yeah, I think that that's, I'm sure the, the garbage truck operators love that the alley's that wide.
Yeah. That might have been one of the reasons.
Because most of the alleys are about probably a third of that size. And that's, you know, kind of the common, more craftsman style homes out there, smaller footprint. McGregor Second, so this is, you know, an older area town. This was platted in, I think, the late eighteen eighties, yeah, eighteen eighty-nine. So this is a subdivision plat boundary. Kind of got this mixture. I mean, you've got the animal clinic down here. It's about, I think, the only commercial use, but it's really just an intermingling of, I think, the R-four, R-three dividing line is Logan, so you've got R-four, which is multifamily zone over here and you've got R-three, uh, which is medium density.
Yeah, part of that neighborhood historically was sort of for in-town farm. I mean, there are some really big lots with barns.
Yeah, and there used to be a pond, I believe, right here, because if you go, you know, there's some, uh, an infill lot here where they had done a couple apartment buildings and there's a duplex, actually a fourplex here. But yeah, I, I actually lived there when I first moved to town and they said that this used to be, if you notice, that's like the low-lying area.
Oh, interesting.
And that used to be, I think, a freshwater pond, I think, for some of the animals. But yeah, if you notice, like, a lot of the, there are quite a few barns, you know, older barns in this area, like up Logan, around this, you know, between Harrison and Logan, you know, kind of in this area, but you have a lot of larger kind of homestead houses that are on corner lots
Right.
in this area. So yeah, it's, you know, this is a lot different of a lay, I mean, it, it's more traditional grid pattern, but as far as the lots, you know, they're just a, kind of this conglomeration of just different size, shape lots, you know, that have probably been subdivided, transformed over time, you know, different than the, you know, every lot here is pretty much the same size.
How wide are those?
But it's similar.
Lots, how wide are those lots?
Yeah, it's, uh, I think they're at about sixty because they have, yeah. But, yeah, I mean, you're looking at about the same density, so six point nine four, you know, as opposed to six point six nine, so. Pretty similar, pretty similar density, but you do have a mixture of multifamily, you know, duplex, single family in this area. And then I don't know, I think this was supposed to be the first Fort Russell subdivision, which has never really made a whole lot of sense to me. I mean, it was always really small. And, you know, you have Fort Russell and you've got Russell Second Edition and it doesn't really follow any type of logical boundary, especially with our Fort Russell historic district, you know, and so. I just kind of looked at this area, but, you know, you look up and you've got some smaller lots and, you know, probably a little bit more of a mixture of, you know, houses that have been broken up into apartments or duplexes and, I mean, the density here is eight point one dwelling units per acre, so. Quite a bit, you know, higher than, than the rest, but this is close to the city core, you know, this is about as close as you get for a residential neighborhood to, to the center of the city. Camden Court, this is out by White Avenue as well. And so this is old picture from two thousand ten, I believe, but, yeah, it's, I think there's three lots that are still vacant out there right now, but this is a PUD. You know, they went through the PUD requirement or the process and this is a private drive through here and they're more of this shotgun style homes. And, but yeah, it's, you know, homeowners association pays for all the landscaping maintenance, the plowing of the, the road and everything, so.
And that's a common space in the middle there?
It's actually, it is a common space, but it's a stormwater detention pond for the city, but I, they've, I think the residents are wanting to use it more of like a garden area because it doesn't fill completely up, you know, there's areas on the outskirts that you can use. But yeah, seven point six nine dwelling units per acre, so a little bit higher in The Villages over here, a little bit lower than Fort Russell. And that's a, you know, kind of an example, about ten feet in between, you know, each of these units. And they're pretty much just shotgun style, so they're just long and linear. Maybe it did have Green Acres, coloring green looks like. So yeah, this is, I mean, this is probably more closely resemble some of these that you're looking at, like the Third Street cottages, you know, talks about, you know, requirements where they have to have some type of proximity to a central green space or open area. And that's what, you know, they've done here. They, this is another PUD that they went through and a lot of these are single family homes. These are actually twin homes here, so they're duplexes on individual lots. But the majority of them, you know, you have the, I think they, they were calling them townhouses at the time, but kind of these three-story twin homes on the south side and then it just transitions into more just single family, but this is, I believe, they're either one or two houses away from being completely built out or they're, they're completely built out. But this is all, you know, been landscaped and there's a big playground, community feature in the middle, this development, but you look at the, and these are all private drives, you know, through here. This is actually a city cul-de-sac that they've, you know, had a kind of a central feature. And then it accesses off of the city street, but these are private drives and I think they're only twenty feet wide for firetruck access, but the whole loop is, is private. So you look at the net density here, it jumps all the way up to twenty-one. You know, and so you're looking at a lot of apartment complexes that come into comparable densities, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four dwelling units per acre. And a lot of what restricts their density is not what our zoning code says, but what the parking regulations are. You know, instead of like large parking lots, they have two-car garages, which satisfies, you know, their requirement. They don't have, I think some of them are tandem garages, so they've got, you know, one car in front of the other. And then there's some areas for visitor parking, so like this whole area is visitor, some over here. And then there's in between the townhouses, there, there's some visitor parking as well.
Well, if that's, I mean, if that's built out, it kind of proves that sort of density sells.
But it took eleven years.
Yeah.
I mean, as a, as a developer, I would think that was pretty painful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it, did they start it right before the recession? I don't know, when did?
It was two thousand seven is when, yeah.
That bad timing.
It was right in the middle.
Well, it was, yeah, I mean, you have a lot of those PUDs out there, like Tambo Commons, Green Acres, that all started around the two thousand and seven and, you know, it just, yeah. It, it hit the recession and then it, it was, it was tough. They had some type of financing here that, I don't know exactly, I mean, it was, it was through, maybe it was IFHA. But it was kind of a deed restriction financing where you had to, you know, retain it for a certain number of years before you could resell it. And I don't know if they have a limit on what you could resell it for, but I know that this was, you know, kind of an attempt at some affordable housing.
Affordable housing, so that's how they.
And it was a lower price point and, and so that was really attractive, you know, back, back then for, for people to kind of start their home.
But I remember nothing was selling during that. I mean, that was pretty flat, a flat market, yeah, for.
So yeah, this is kind of the, you know, coming into the development. These are the twin home, three-story twin homes and these are the single family and then they've got this entry or open space area here in the middle of the playground. You can't see it, it's off in the distance, but kind of all these houses are fronting, you know, the common, common open space area. It's just looking down the, the drive. And then Tambo, we're actually getting pretty close. I mean, this was one that, I mean, the Green Acres, you have the same developer that saw the project through Tambo. There's been numerous developers, you know, contractors that have been in, you know, building in Tambo and it was stalled for a few years. You know, there wasn't much activity going on. We're actually getting pretty close to completing it. I think there's about five vacant lots that are still there. But if you notice, the, the prices have gone pretty high in there, you know, I mean, at, at, at one point, I think that, you know, the price point was maybe a hundred and eighty thousand and I think the latest homes I've seen in there are about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand, so. You know, it's, it's taken a while to get built out, but, you know, now that it's, you know, kind of gotten momentum over the last couple of years and so we see the end of it, but, you know, this is, uh, just went through the PUD process as well. You know, all these lots have minimal setbacks, about three feet in the front and the rear, three feet in the sides. And they all have these community features like, you know, a sidewalk that goes down the middle, connects to the, the public sidewalk.
Is that a park to the left there?
That's actually another stormwater detention.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, this one is, is similar to Green Acres, you know, about twenty-one dwelling units per acre. You know, once again, private drive, so they're quite a bit smaller than the typical, you know, city, city street that you see. And then Peterson First, so this is, and they end up Baker and this has all been built out there. Bloom had continued building some apartments over here on the north side and you look at the net density, it's, this is pretty much what we top out at. You know, if you're building apartments, usually three stories. And so three stories with parking lots associated with them is, is pretty much, that's about what you max out at, is about twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six dwelling units per acre. I mean, you can look at most apartment complexes that are three stories and that's pretty much, you know, what they end up maxing out as, so.
Interesting. Well, that's really helpful, Mike. It gives us a good sense of what, what we are.
Yeah, I, you know, a lot of times you look at the numbers and it's, it's hard to visualize, you know, what that, that means or what that equates to.
I had a sabbatical project looking at railroad towns and I went around and I measured, well, this is back before GPS and, you know, Google Earth and everything and I'd use a measuring wheel and go around and measure their city blocks and then count how many housing units and like places that had mining cultures or like Clayell in Washington, they had a, off the alleys, they had a lot of secondary houses for, you know, people were working in the mines or working. they had a lot of secondary houses for, you know, people were working in the mines or working in, in the sawmills or whatever, so the, you'd get like, you know, seventeen houses per block compared to Moscow would be about eight, you know, in, in the core of the traditional part of town. So they were, they really ramped up the density with accessory dwellings back, and it was kind of interesting, but, anyway. And people used to ask me, well, they'd come out, they'd see me with the measuring wheel, are you with the, are you with the tax office? What are you doing? And it was a great way to get, you know, people's stories in their neighborhood.
Yeah, walk around with a clipboard or camera.
Yeah, well, I was thinking, I was measuring things with a measuring wheel, and it's like, kind of, you're kind of conspicuous and taking pictures. Anyway, well, thank you, that's, that's really helpful. Anybody have any other comments?
One of the things I noticed, like when you had Baker Street up, one of the things the article talks about is having, or just mentions, is having public transit.
Right.
You have the bus wrap right there, that the students do use.
Yeah.
In that area.
Yeah, that's.
Makes a big difference.
It does, yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, have we exhausted ourselves? All right, thanks, me and you enjoyed it, I guess.